We'll call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Douglas County, Nebraska for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. We'll go into the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, and B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of admitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions under equalization. I am predicting the items F and G might have more commentary to them, so I may entertain a motion for the Board to approve items C through I minus F and G to start with. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan to approve all resolutions minus F and G. We're going to do those separately. Did anybody come to speak on any of those other items? If not, we'll vote on those. No, no, no. Everything but F and G. Yep.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. That will take us first to F. F is the approving recommendations of value for real properties that have a report of damaged real property related to Form 425. Mr. Clerk, do you want to give us just a quick reminder of what these are?
Yes, Dan S., Douglas County Clerk. So this is when after, in any year after January 1, and before July 1, if a property sustains significant enough damage, usually to a weather-related event, but it doesn't have to be weather, they can file a report of damaged real property. And the county assessor's office will review the report and make a recommendation. This year, we had 21 properties file reports of damaged real property, and 17 of them are being recommended for a change, and four of them are, according to the assessor's opinion, did not sustain enough damage to qualify for a reduction. So that's what this item is.
Got it. Thank you. And before going to Commissioner Kavanaugh, was there anybody from the public that wanted to speak on F? Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I was just trying to follow up on what the clerk had to say. If I heard this correctly, there were 41 properties in this category. Is that correct?
Twenty-one.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And of those 21, a percentage were disbursed at a percentage where changed. What was that, if you know?
Well, I could probably, it was 17 of the 21 received a change, so I guess a little over 75%.
Were changed?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on F? If not, we'll vote. I think I still need a motion and second for F to approve the recommendations. The motion was by Rogers and second by Morgan for F. We'll vote on that.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Now, we'll go to item G, and if you'd like to kick us off, I know you've got a few.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good morning. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. With me is my colleague, Carrie Schwab. We have two items under item G that we would like to address the Board on and request that the Board change the recommendation on. One, I will talk about, and then I will turn the other over to Carrie. The one she's talking about has actually three parcels. The first one, the taxpayer is the tenant. It's called The Bay, and I'll just read from their own material. "Since 2010, The Bay, 501(c)(3) has been a lifeline and launchpad for youth, a safe space to belong, create, and chart their future. Open late on nights and weekends, The Bay breaks down barriers by offering free or pay-what-you-can programming in music, art, media, fashion, and skateboarding focused on youth who are often overlooked. It is a place to build community, find mentorship, and gain real-world skills." The Bay occupies a building at 6120 Military Avenue in the Benson neighborhood. As I said, The Bay is a nonprofit. I just talked about their mission. The proposed valuation on that building was $1.3 million approximately, 1,309,100. The referee recommended a reduction to $1,047,300. We had protested seeking a valuation of $458,823. Our request is based on the below-market rent that The Bay pays. They pay $1 a square foot for 39,000 square feet. If you take that and you do an income calculation using an eight cap rate, you get to our proposed valuation of $458,823. The referee actually used a higher cap rate, a more favorable cap rate, to lower the valuation of 10, and that resulted, I believe, in the recommendation to go from 1.3 million, 1,309,100 to 1,047,300. But that considers a market-rate rent. Again, The Bay is renting this space under a long-term lease for $1 a square foot, so $39,000 is the rent. You take that and simply do a net income calculation using an eight cap rate, which is a very, I think, fair cap rate for that type of space. Again, less favorable to us than the referee even used, and you get to that $458,000. The last thing I'll say is the practical reality of this is the referee's recommended valuation results in about $22,000, $23,000 a year in property taxes to this nonprofit that is trying to serve overlooked youth in our community. Our requested valuation would cut that property tax bill approximately in half or a little less than half to about $11,000. So this would leave $11,000, $12,000 to programming, not to property taxes. I realize that's not how the law requires you to look at it, but I think it's important to look at the practical reality of this as well. But again, simple net income calculation, very reasonable eight cap rate leads to our valuation based on the actual rent, which is below-market, and that's our request is that the Board would grant our protest and set the value at that number of $458,823 was our protest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, this can be found second down on page 53. It's Hulak Inc. Page 53, the second one down.
Thank you. The protest number is 061281.
53.
Page 53. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Levy. We'll take each property one at a time, so let's focus on this one first. And Commissioner Morgan?
Okay. You said long-term lease. How long?
Believe, let me see. I've got it right here. I think it is, I guess, I will just look. So it's a 10-year lease with two five-year options.
Okay. At the dollar a square foot?
Correct.
And Board, you know, Board, I wasn't aware of this, Mr. Levy, but the fact is, that's more than a fair price, I mean, to the nonprofit.
I agree.
And cap rates right now might be around six, which is even lower this rate, I mean, as far as the value of the property, because if you're buying it, you'd have a hard time, you know?
At a higher.
Yes.
Yep.
So you're really accurate in what you've said, and I never had a conversation with you about this or have anything been to that property on 61st and Military. This is really, in my opinion, most fair what you've asked for, because I got to tell you, there'd be a lot of people wanting to buy a property if it had an eight cap on it in today's world. They're happy to buy them at about a six cap, which, you know, would even lower the value further than what you requested. Therefore, and I'll be happy to answer any questions my colleagues, other commissioners have of me on this, because I happen to, you know, do cap rates very, very often nationally. I'm going to make a motion that we accept your recommendation and move forward with that reduction.
Thank you.
His request? Go ahead. It's 400.
Our requested valuation, 458,823.
And if you were trying to sell this property, I don't care if it's worth a million dollars, you're stuck with a 10-year lease and two five-year options, you're not going to buy it for a bigger number, because you can take your money to the bank and get a greater return. So it's really a fair situation.
There's a motion on the floor to take this property's assessment down to 458,823. Is there a second for further discussion on that motion? If you want to discuss it, then I think I suggest you second it first. All right, second. And so we'll discuss the motion and the recommendation to take it down to 458,000, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
So, Mr. Levy, this property is listed as owned by Hulak Inc.?
That's correct.
And you're representing who?
We represent The Bay, which is the nonprofit that occupies the building, and per their lease, they're responsible for the property taxes.
Okay. So they're the sole occupant?
I believe so, yes.
And how long have they been there?
Not that long. The lease commenced... Lawyers, the way they write these things. I'm not finding the effective date offhand, but they've been there, I'll call it, a year, something like that.
And from that time when they occupied it till now, what's been the value, the assessed value?
I don't know what the assessed value in 2024 was. I don't know if it says that on the report.
I can look this up.
Do we have that?
Not the 2024, but I will in a second here.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
I don't have it yet. I'm looking it up right now for you.
It's your position that this increase would involve a significant increase in the rent that your client would pay?
No. Our position is simply that for a commercial space, the valuation for property tax purposes should be calculated on actual value, which in this case is the net income, which is a below-market rate rent under a lease that is at least 10 years long and could be 20 years long. So the actual value of this building is much less than what the assessor had proposed or even the referee had proposed because of the below-market rate rent that the landlord is able to get from our, or willing to get from our client, the nonprofit who's operating there.
Okay. So what's the annual rent that your client pays?
$39,000.
$39,000.
Correct.
And I think you indicated that that is tied to a lease that has some type of an escalator clause. If the valuation goes up, the taxes go up. Is that correct?
Our client is responsible to pay the property taxes, so if you were to deny our protest, the economic, the financial burden of those higher property taxes would fall to our client, the nonprofit.
And I think you stated the dollar amount that that would be. What was that?
The delta is approximately $11,000, $12,000.
And your client, a not-for-profit, has an annual budget of what, if you know?
I don't know.
Does your associate know?
I do not know.
Good.
They're a fairly small organization. They've been operating in Lincoln since 2010. They're fairly new to Omaha. This is their, I believe, their first space in Omaha.
Okay. Well, you know, I think my position would mirror my colleague, Mr. Morgan's, in terms of the arguments that he made. And so if we're talking about a reduction here, is that a reduction to the current amount of 458,823? Is that the current amount?
That's our requested valuation based on the actual rent and the cap rate.
Okay. And Mr. Goodwilly, maybe you can help us with the current amount?
Well, let me provide a little backdrop. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds. I know that the 24 value was 1.3 million. There was a protest. The Board did not make any change in that year. In '24, there was a listing of the property for $18 a square foot rather than $1 a square foot.
If you could speak up, please.
I'm sorry, sure. In '24, there was a listing of the property for $18 a square foot, and what I would simply suggest to you is there's a couple of issues in play legally that Mr. Levy has touched on already. One is that we're obliged to value property at its market value, okay? What would it be in the marketplace as opposed to some sort of deep discount on the rent, which is mostly a management decision, okay? And second, there's a uniformity and proportionality issue in terms of other similar sorts of office space. So with that, I don't know. You might want to ask the referee supervisor what they recommended and why. But just as backdrop, since you were struggling with what the value was last year and what the history of this parcel was, I thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. That concludes Commissioner Kavanaugh's first round. We'll go to Commissioner Morgeson.
Well, two things. I think before anything, we should hear from the referees, since that's who we have given our work to, to do this before anything is done. But I just want you to know ahead of time and anybody else who's sitting here, I have historically voted no on anybody that comes forward. We advocated our authority of Board of Equalization to the referees for this very reason, because there's no way we as a Board can sit in judgment of almost 5,000 parcels based on the law that we have to sit as a full Board. Just timing doesn't cut it. I think it's totally unfair that there are certain individuals that get to come before the Board and plead their case to us when there's, you know, 4,000 other ones out there that don't, and it was, it's never published or said that they should come to the Board. A few select get to come to the Board because they're told, but this is wrong. This is, it's not your fault, but I'm just explaining to you why I'm going to vote no, because the proper process for this is we've given it to the referees, the referees look at it, the referees give us the recommendations. If you, as the property owner or taxpayer representative, don't like it, then the next available process for you is to go to Turk, and that's how it should work. If we as a Board, again, we've discussed this every single year for I don't know how many years, if we want to start hearing individual protests, then we should hear them all, not just select ones. And so I just want you to understand, David, why I'm voting no on these, is because I think it's wrong of us to give a select few people the opportunity to come before this Board. We're making motions in seconds before we even hear from our referees, who we, given our authority to do these things for us, they're the experts, so I'm just voting no, and I wanted you to understand that. It's nothing against your argument. You may have a very valid argument, but again, we're going outside our lines of process, and I think it's wrong.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Before I go to the next round, I would like a point of information from the referee, our referee supervisor, to provide context on the case.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Musto, 1011 South 78th Street, Commercial Coordinator. I do recall some information regarding this property. I'd have to pull up more on the assessor packet to look at it, and I understand that the lease is written as a $1 per square foot with, as they say, remaining nine years on the lease. However, by virtue of what the state has issued is, the valuation is on the actual value, and to value this on a $1, which is, by admission, by the representation, is below-market rent, you would be having a leased fee value, which would not be reflective of market value. And I believe that's why the referee said, all right, this building had been vacant, had taken some time to get leased, and the value is probably, based upon the rent that the assessor had previously, maybe slightly down from that. I'm trying to look at the building. Is a building about 40,000 square feet? Yeah. Building about 40,000 square feet in the Benson there area, and their valuation, although I'm not having an opinion, I understand they're a nonprofit and wanting to protect the monies that they collect and how they spend them, but you're putting this building at a value of about $10 per square foot, which, not that I want to go too deep into this, but if the building is valued at $10 per square foot, we'll probably have every neighbor around it come in and on equalization say, hey, I should be valued at $10 a square foot, too. And I think our job has always been asked to reflect what we thought was market value as of January 1 of the year, and we've taken that information. I understand there can be below-market leases, and they are brought to our attention more than just in this case, and we will take it to what we believe should be market, which I believe is what the assessor has done as well. So I don't know what else. I would certainly answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you for that. There may be some questions for you, but we'll first go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
You have some. Thank you for this.
Certainly.
So if I understand your position, it's that the proponents of this reduction are arguing for essentially a $10 a square foot valuation based on what they think would be a fair level of assessment, and you're saying, based on the surrounding area of $18 a square foot, is that correct?
No, that was what it was originally listed as, but I believe, I don't have the listing here in front of me, but I believe that's probably what somebody was marketing it to take the space and maybe renovate it and get the $18 with the money spent. If I'm not mistaken, this tenant may have taken the space as it is or spent money themselves to improve it. But I do have some familiarity with the market and area, and there are not many buildings selling for $10 a square foot, which is what the related value would be, $10, $11, $12 a square foot.
Right. So, you know, based on that, then, what is the market average in that area?
Well, every building is going to be unique to itself. This being a rather large building of industrial nature, the valuation that would be on it now, I guess before, was probably close to $30 a square foot. It doesn't seem unreasonable, but even at this rate, it's $20, $25 a square foot at the million-dollar valuation. I'd have to pull some data together to actually look at it, and the assessor packet in there has got some of the sales that they utilized in looking at their valuation.
Okay. So, you know, it's kind of like reverse engineering. They're at 400,000 and change, and you're at a million plus. I'm just trying to determine, how do you get from where they are to where you are? If it's $10 a square foot at where they are, how do you get to, what is it per square foot where you're at?
Well, I was never at 400,000. We were looking at what the assessor had. I would, again, we've got... I mean, there was probably some additional notes here, but if you're at 30,000 square feet, and he was referencing the assessor using, or I'm sorry, the referee using a 10, 10 cap, the assessor on a 10 cap was probably applying a rent of about $5 a square foot, is my guess. It sounds about right. So something less than, certainly something less than the 18, but the assessor wasn't applying 18 either. That was just a marketing brochure, again, saying, hey, we'll rent this to you for 18 bucks a square foot, but we're going to do some TIs, tenant improvements, and probably finish and bring it up to it. You're in an old area, so things can be at the very low end of the spectrum, and when you've got some of that space, it's, they've spent a lot of money, done a lot of finishing, they bring it up, it creates value.
I appreciate that. I'm still a little confused of how you get to the high number. I mean, I understand what they're talking about in terms of the formula they use to get to their number. I don't know the formulas being utilized here, but thank you.
All right. I'll take a quick round. My initial question is for Mr. Goodwilly, or anybody else who might be able to answer, and the question is, does state statute, state law, provide discrepancy or reasoning to lower an assessment? to lower an assessment for utilization of what's going on in the building? Like, for example, a nonprofit being in the building? Does it take that into consideration?
What you're really asking is, should the identity of the tenant make a difference in how you value the property? And I would suggest to you, there are a number of Supreme Court cases that have said over the years, that the identity of the owner at least should not make the slightest bit of difference in terms of how you value a property. And I could only think that that probably applies to tenants too. So, I don't get to value you differently than I do Commissioner Morgan if you're neighbors, just because your circumstances may be more personally dire than his.
Yep. So we are in a situation, if I'm understanding, where the assessment that your office gave initially was the 1.3 million?
Which was what it was last year and was left unchanged by the board last year.
Okay, unchanged from last year. The referee, in the referee's rationale and insight into the case, lowered it to by about 250,000, more or less?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yep. So there was a lowering there by the referee. The number Mr. Levy's giving is based on the contract with the nonprofit for what the nonprofit is paying for the space, right? Which kind of gets to my utilization question a little bit, and identity of the tenant a little bit, but... So if the state law doesn't really look at identity of owner or tenant, I lean a little bit more towards the referee's lowering and number. I mean, I'm a big fan of the bait, to be honest, but I think in this case, the landowner is the one that chose to give a contract at a specific rate, a less-than-market rate contract for the space. So that was the owner's decision, right? Not the assessor's decision, not our decision. If they're making that decision, it's because they can afford it, I'm guessing, I don't know. And then with the nonprofit, being a nonprofit manager myself, taking on the responsibility of the taxes is a little bit of a not common in a contract, I don't think. All the leases I've had for my nonprofits have never taken on the responsibility of taxes. So that is definitely a little bit of a risky provision in that contract. Taxes can go up and down, we know that, right? So, it's kind of an interesting case, but a little bit leaning towards the referee at the moment. But Mr. Levy, you have about 40 seconds if you want to take the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I'll be brief and be mindful of what Commissioner Morgeson said. It is not the identity of the tenant, one nonprofit versus another. What we are arguing for is that the actual value of the property based on this long-term lease is what the board should consider. That reflects the actual value of the property. Nebraska Revised Statute 77-201 says that, sub 1, says that except as provided in subsections 2 through 4, which are about ag land exemptions, "All real property in this state not expressly exempt thereof shall be subject to taxation and shall be valued at its actual value." That's what we're asking for. The actual value of this property is represented by that long-term lease. I won't belabor it further, that's our argument. If you use that with us, Commissioner Morgan said is a very reasonable cap rate, maybe one that is disfavorable to us a little bit, you get the value that we're asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Quick point of information to clarify anything there?
Yeah, if I may drop the other shoe, Mr. Levy's absolutely correct about 77-201. Actual value is defined in 77-112 as the most probable price expressed in terms of money between a willing buyer and a willing seller in the marketplace. And so, actual value translates into market value. So when you hear the referee say, well, here's what the market value is for office space in the Benson neighborhood, that's kind of the obligation of how we value, so.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwilly. I'm going to go to Commissioner Morgan for our second round.
Okay. Ms. ... Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I was getting some mixed signals.
Is it a point of clarification on statutes, otherwise?
No, I'm just...
It's not? Yeah, okay. We might let you chime in in a second here, but first let me get the Commissioner Morgan.
We're all very anxious.
Okay. As far as the Board of Equalization, the final responsibility by statute is with us. We are the Board of Equalization, and whoever wants to come can come down. And I never spoke with you before, or invited you down, or anything else. I mean, people come down and you can tell people that they can come to the Board of Equalization. And, you know, I think there's facts about this, and I think, Mr. Goodwilly, I want you to be sure you give me constructive criticism about this, but I have been a nationally-licensed appraiser for many years until I became the mayor, and I gave it up, and the state one I also had and gave it up. The fact is, market value is an interesting thing. And the example I'll give very clearly is a 108-10 Farnham, it's an office building that you could not build for $400 a foot. Guy bought it for 12 million in '06, I wasn't involved. I know who was, Colliers was involved. It sold recently for $4 million, very simply because it's had 80,000 feet vacant for the last probably 10 years, eight years. And it's an excellent building, in a great location, with plenty of parking and everything. I'm going to tell you that many properties, with all respect, Commissioner Garcia, are listed, and it's, you rent as triple net on commercial space most of the time, and the same with office buildings. So for example, we'll rent an office for $10 a foot just south or north of 78th and Dodge, and it's triple net. You pay for snow removal 10%, if you occupy 10% of the space. You pay the utilities 10% if you're in 10% of the space, or 40% or whatever you happen to be in. So this is not unusual. And for somebody on a market, if you've got a long-term lease, and it's below-market or above-market, that's going to affect the value of the property of what you can sell it for. And no one's going to buy this property for a million dollars and have a $40,000 return is all. Or it just wouldn't make sense, you're better off put your money at the bank and get 5% or 4.7, or whatever it is today. The one thing I do think is a factor, this is an arm's-length lease, isn't it? I mean, he doesn't own the nonprofit too. So the nonprofit is who pays the taxes? They pay the utilities, they pay whatever else. If there's lawn care or whatever, they're doing all that, if that's accurate?
Correct.
So this isn't unusual, and I think Mr. Goodwilly would agree with me, that on all those strip centers at 100 and whatever in Dodge, or whatever street center, they're paying a triple-net kind of situation. So what that means, if somebody here thinks, hey, I'd buy this building for a million dollars because I have a $40,000 a year return, they probably rented it to them and said, take it as-is because I'm not doing your improvements. And that's what's holding off a lot of people from moving into space today, because it costs over a hundred and some dollars to build out that space when a new tenant comes in. So, that's the reason for this, and market value is what you can sell it for based upon the leases that are in the building. There's buildings in Regency that you couldn't build for 500 if somebody gave you the land. They're assessed at $70 a foot right now, because they're vacant. And some of them have been vacant floors, six years.
That's time.
In Regency, which is a great location. And that's a fact, and that affects the value of the building, big time. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go to a first round for Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to, you know, my heart would love to support it, but I can't come to terms with it. One, I mean, you know in the statute, and everybody's talking about, you know, if you the sale and market rate, but I can't square the fact that, you know, I don't know if there's a distinction in there between the lease and the sale. It's a lease. And you just said they leased it to you for a dollar, which was way below. So that was a choice. I don't know if that's the real value of it, but the story I keep playing in my head is, okay, everybody then starts leasing their property for a value of a dollar, and then starts coming in here and saying they justify that it should come down because of the lease. I'm not hearing you saying that that's the least good value of the property. I'm hearing you say that's what they did with you to give you a good deal. And like Commissioner Garcia said, I've never heard of that deal being negotiated like that, where the nonprofit pays that rent. They negotiated with you to pay the rent, they didn't negotiate at the building price, and the fair market value would change. And so, I think whoever negotiated that did it bad. And, you know, I'm really uncomfortable with the precedent that that's going to set. And I don't know if we got all that authority. I mean, we do it on BOE on some things, but this has to me a bigger ramification and effect. And just like was said, if we do this then, I feel like personally I have no standing to come in when somebody comes in here around that area and then starts saying, well, I want my property negotiated down because you just did that. I mean, basically, I've lost all high ground on that personally, and I do believe in trying to be fair with it. But the main point that's being made is the law says, you're saying the law says that, you know, whatever you stated with the law, what I keep playing in my head is, the build is not sold, it's leased. They leased it to you at a way-low value. And so, to me, that's setting up a scenario that I'm not comfortable with. So I'm going to be at no harm.
Thank you. We'll go to a third two-minute round for Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I seem to recall, Mr. Goodwilly, maybe you can help with this a little bit. A case a few years ago involving the Woodman Tower across the street, and I think it went all the way to the Supreme Court. We were a party of that case. And basically, I think the ruling was something like, well, the Woodman Benevolent Association is a charitable organization.
No, no, it didn't. Commissioner, it didn't get that far. It was on track for hearing at Turk. What had happened...
Okay, I don't know, but procedural, but what was the ultimate ruling on it?
The ultimate ruling was, Woodman bought an exemption from the Legislature fair and square, and that killed the case.
Okay, but they were exempted because of...
Because the Legislature changed the law to provide that fraternal benefit societies could qualify for an exemption. So essentially, the Legislature gave a multimillion-dollar insurance company a property tax exemption.
Right, right. Where, in fact, this one is not some concocted benefit society, this is an actual legitimate 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I'm not arguing about that at all.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to say, if we're treating these folks across the street as a tax-exempt entity, you know, from an...
Well, but we didn't treat them that way. We denied Woodman every step of the way.
No, but about half of that is exempt, correct?
It took the Legislature to do it.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to circle back to the motion made by Commissioner Morgan to reduce the assessment to 258,823. If no further comments on that, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion that Commissioner Morgan made.
And I put it at 458,820, just because I know the assessor's office doesn't do, you know, it always ends in a zero, so.
That works. If you want one, sure.
Market value, if you look up the definition of market value, is what you can sell a property for in today's market. That's what market value means. And the market value is affected by this lease, and like I'm saying about office buildings, there's office buildings you can lease in this city for $4 a foot triple net that have been vacant six years or thereabouts, because you'll take them as-is, and the owner doesn't have to spend $150 so you can move into the building per foot, because that starts to become, for 10,000 feet, over a million dollars you're going to spend. So that's why I'm giving you the cheap rent if you'll take my building as-is. And that's probably what happened on this situation. The guy didn't want to spend money per square foot and leased it especially to a charitable organization for a much fairer price. But market value, if you've got a lease, that's going to affect what you can sell it for, totally. And I think Mr. Goodwilly would share my view, that if a building is vacant, that has an effect on the price, and that's why you have buildings in Regency, office buildings valued at $70 a foot. And at 108-10 Farnham, probably at closer to 40-some dollars a foot.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Nothing else, we'll vote on Commissioner Morgan's motion.
Motion fails. Commissioners Fahey, Kavanaugh, Morgan voting yes, but all other commissioners voting no.
Okay, we're going to circle back to item G in general, and I know you had a second property to talk about, Mr. Levy. But before I go to that second property, I should have done this from the beginning, so my apologies. If I can get a motion in a second for item G in general, then we discuss it, and if any properties need to be changed, lowered, or anything, we can still do that, but... Motion by Rogers for G, second by Morgan. Okay, now we're in the full discussion of G, and second property y'all want to talk about?
Good morning. Just for clarification, my name is Carrie Schwab, I'm with Baird Home. Yes, I'll stand closer to the mic. My name is Carrie Schwab, I'm with Baird Home, here on behalf of the owner of three parcels located in Hanover Falls. It's a subdivision in Bennington. I can repeat the parcel numbers if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Alright, so we have the first parcel as 1-2-3-3-6-9-3-3.
All, uh...
And the other two parcels are going to have the first 2-4-6-8 digits for ease.
The 2-6 and 2-8?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioners, this is a very last one on page 48, very top two on page The owner on all three of them is Hanover Falls Center Association.
So Commissioners, these parcels are all outlots located in this subdivision. They're on the southeast corner of the subdivision. They are actually undevelopable. They are pursuant to a development agreement with the City of Omaha. The developer cannot develop these lots. The 2024 assessment of these parcels reflected that in the nominal assessment value of 400. I think one was 100 and another was 800. Unfortunately, this year, the county assessor mistakenly assessed these three parcels at their fair market commercial residential value, so they were valued for, I forget the exact values, but, you know, 120,000, 150,000. The referee's recommendation mostly righted that mistake. Unfortunately, the referee's recommendation was still very inflated, so we're talking about a 500-plus increase across the three parcels. So, you know, we're going up from a parcel that was valued in 2024 at $100 to being now valued at $800, for example. Another going from 400 to over 2,000. And one of these lots has also been valued or recommended to be valued at over $5,000. Again, these are all completely undevelopable, there are drainage, there's... There are drainage, uh, there's drainage on these lots, there are detention areas, there, um, there's like a craggy creek that runs through one of them. They're not going to be able to be valued at that, um, that amount, even at the referee's recommendation, given just the encumbrances to the, to the parcels. So we are requesting that the, uh, the board, uh, reduce the value back to the 2024 assessment for each of these parcels, uh, which is, uh, par for what you find in other neighborhoods in the area. Specifically, I do want to point to there are several lot, lots in a neighborhood just west of Hanover Falls that feature similar lots under similar development restrictions whose values have not changed from 2024 to 2025 and are still valued at nominal values of $100, for example. I don't have those exact parcel numbers on me, but they exist. And it is just down the street from Hanover Falls. So again, because nothing has changed since 2024, we urge the board to, uh, return the values of these parcels to, uh, the 2024 assessed assessments. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into conversation on that. Any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Morgan?
So you can't build on these lots?
No.
Ever?
According to the development agreement, uh, that is part of a restriction is that you cannot develop those lots upon the completion of the, the development.
And the owner of them, I assume, keeps them mowed and takes care of them?
Sure, they, yes.
So I'd ask a question. Has the owner thought about trying to donate to the city, county? I mean-
I, I don't know. But they did enter into this agreement with the city of Omaha, um, for this development. So that much I know.
Well, I do want to hear what the referees say about that one.
Sure.
Just because I want to learn and be able to make a, uh, a good estimate of what you're requesting. So with that, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Before I go down the queue, let's get a quick point of information from the referee on this property, or the three properties.
Let me jot down one of these parcel numbers real quick so I can search it on the computer there.
Good morning. Rick Coder, 5621 North 141st Circle. I'm the coordinator for the BOE, mostly residential work. The lots in question, as I recall, are, uh, part of the HOA. There's a million of them in town. And if, if my recollection is right, as part of the HOA, you can't give it away to the city. That's part of the HOA's, uh, operation, I guess. Basically, we went to a token value on those. We went from, you know, $74,000 to $5,000. I don't think the number is, is greatly relevant on it. But we just, we understand the lack of value in that. We just cut it down to what we felt was a token amount.
Questions? We'll go to Commissioner Friend and then Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Coder, the, a, a token amount is related directly to, um, the actual value which would also translate to the market value? I, I, I'm having a little trouble getting my hands wrapped around this. I'll tell you why. I live in an HOA and, uh, I can, I can go down, I, I can walk three blocks to an area that has a storm runoff and the land is actually totally undevelopable, undevelopable. So what you're saying is most of those HOAs are paying a token amount. That token amount reflects what? The market value of that drainage property?
It's just, you've got a, Commissioner, you've got to hang a number on that as far as some kind of evaluation for tax purpose. You can't put them at zero. We've had years where we've done a lot of these. We didn't do, I didn't see a whole ton of them this year. But we just, we reduced them down, yeah, acknowledging they're not worth much, they're there. They contribute to the, uh, overall value of the people living there who are basically paying most of the tax on that as far as part of what they're paying for their property. But we just, we say they're not worth very darn much, they're not very much taxable on it. So we're just gonna throw a, a token number at them.
Fair enough, Mr. Coder, but the token value last year was different, correct?
I, I, whatever they were, they were 100 last year. That we were invited, not set those last year, sir. And they had a lot of those, they had a number of those at $100. And, uh, that is what somewhere in the assessor's office decided 100 was a token value. We felt 5,000 was a token value.
And do, do you think it's fair, final, hopefully, final question, I guess. Do you think it's fair to assume that when you go through all of this, that, uh, there was a consistency in dealing with those token amounts for the HOAs?
We make every effort to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
I think you answered my question because my question is, I mean, what's missing? Because you're, they're saying that their, their piece is the only piece they got touched. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I'm hearing them say that their piece of land is the only one they, that's what I'm interpreting that as because they're saying the other land around here that was the same thing down the street was the same. And I'm trying to figure out what's missing.
Well, the, the outlots are the ones that they put in. Developers do, they put some trees there, they sign these or whatever it is. And you really can't build on them and they're not hugely, they're really not valuable at all. You can't sell them, but there's a, a, a need a tax number on those.
So something did happen on the land?
I'm sorry?
You saying something did happen on the land for last year?
No, you can't do anything particularly on the land. But it's just a matter of you have to have some tax value established on that little piece of ground. In, in my mind, 5,000 within the scope of what they pay for these lands is pretty token.
And I'm, I don't disagree. I, I'm just trying to figure out, um, well, no, no, nevermind. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And did you have something?
Dan S. Douglas County Clerk, this would help. This is just the, the total for all three parcels. So the original 2025 value, if you added all three parcels up, it was $417,000. The referees, uh, knocked all three down to a total of $8,200. But, uh, the protester is asking it to be returned to the 2024 value, which would have been in total $1,300. So 1,300, basically for all three parcels, 1,300 in total value is what the protester is asking for. The referees have recommended a total of $8,200, but that's down from $417,000 to start off the year.
What was the referee's amount? They recommended 1,800?
$8,200. And the protester is asking for $1,300 for, for all, all three total.
1,300.
Correct. And, and right now, the referees have it at 8,200. Just to reiterate, the, to start off the year, it was at $417,000 total, so.
Other questions or comments on this matter?
I'd make a motion that, I mean, they're not buildable. Is it the developer that owns those lots of the subdivision?
Uh, who, I'm sorry, did you say who's the-
The owner of the lots is the developer?
I believe so, yes, yes.
I'd probably take and make a motion that you take them down to 2,000 a lot, $6,000. Not buildable and that would be a compromise.
Can you clarify that one more time, the numbers? Commissioner Morgan? In your motion?
Six, 2,000 per lot, there's three lots, $6,000 total.
Because one of them is 500, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, they're, they're valued differently. So I would, you know, urge the board to recognize that one of the lots in particular is, um, has a lower value than 2,000.
So one is 5,000, one is 2,700, and one is 500. And those are the referee recommendations, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Do you want to-
I'm not sure why the, maybe the referee could tell us why the difference, who won 5,000 or won 500. I don't know if they-
Is that, just on the size?
They're all unbuildable. I won't speak for him.
Uh, Rick Coder, 5621 North 141st. Uh, the differential basically is the size and the location within the parcel. One's on the street, one's not. Again, it's just, it's just all incidental stuff and there's not much, not much there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to have you.
Do you have a motion or should I move on? Commissioner Morgan?
I guess I, I'll yield to someone else to maybe look at it.
Okay, Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so I, I think the issue that I have with this and, and, and my gut, every, everything in my being tells me that this is somewhat subjective and we can just pick a number and make a deal on this and get it done. Especially, well, let me step back. And you're welcome to opine when I get done here. If, if, if anything I say is coherent, uh, knock yourself out. Here's the issue I have. If I, I could go through this book, I could find Highland Hills. I could find Bennington Lakes. I can find all kinds of things up in my district. And if what Mr. Coder is saying is that they went through all of those and said, we're gonna play consistently with this token amount in these drainage areas. And by the way, again, I just said I could walk two blocks and find one of these drainage areas. Is the HOA gonna call me from Highland Hills in a week and say, wait a minute, I see what you just did with Hanover Falls Center Association. Why in the heck didn't you do it for me? I, I am, I, I am not, to Commissioner Borgson's point, and I'm, I'm not saying I agree with everything she said. I'm not prepared to deal with those ramifications. What I am prepared to deal with is what Mr. Coder is saying is, look, this token amount does reflect what we would, he didn't say this, I'm putting words in his mouth, as close as we can get to market value on a bunch of property that's unusable. If we did that, if we tried to stay consistent and did that with everybody, Hanover, Hanover Falls has representation. What about Highland Hills? What, what happens, I, I, I just, I'm repeating myself. Speak to that. I mean, you're, you're an attorney. I, I want to know what we're putting ourselves into here by, uh, throwing darts at a board.
Yeah. Well, one, I don't think we are throwing darts at a board. We have a token value from the 2024 assessments and yes.
Go ahead.
And I am just urging that we stick to that token value since we, nothing has changed.
Fair enough, but, and, and this isn't moot court, I'm not grilling you.
No, you're fine.
Those token amounts changed. So again, what if Highland Hills amounts changed? I can't even find it. I don't know where it is. I can go look, but what if it did? What, what if those token amounts across the board changed to Mr. Coder's point? And they said, no, this is the way it should be. Last year it was incorrect.
Sure.
I, I know you're, I know you're, you're here for, for them, but that's what I'm struggling-
But I am also here to, you know, this is the law. I mean, we have these lots that are just egregiously valued right now. So I would think that what I am arguing, arguing would be helpful to all property owners on this front. Otherwise, other, next year, those other lots, undevelopable lots in those other neighborhoods could be valued higher than they are currently today.
Okay, well, I would, I, I would ask, thank you for the information you provided. And I, I'd love to, I'd love to help here. My thing is unless this board was willing to go in and take every HOA and say, every HOA in here that actually had an increase in regard to that token amount that revolves around undevelopable, uh, undevelopable land, then I, I, I just, I'm not sure that's fair. I, 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 that's my point here. So I'm not sure what to do with this. I, I'm glad we heard it. I'm learning every day, but to me, to me, this is a little bit difficult.
Can I make one more point?
Sure, we got about five seconds.
This might be helpful. So I think this all stems from the mistake.
She, I'll start my round and you can finish what you're saying.
This all stems from the original mistake in which these parcels were valued at the wrong value for this year. They were brought up to that 100,000, $150,000 value. That hasn't happened across the board, is, would be my point. So we don't have to worry about these other undevelopable lots because they didn't have that same mistake transpire for them. We are trying to fix the mistake of the original assessment for 2025. And so I would urge the board to just make the, I think, easy, straightforward decision of honoring the 2024 assessments since nothing has changed.
And in the same order that they're listed here where it says 5,000, 2,700, and 500, what are the, the values you're referencing that were previously there?
Uh, so for the parcel ending in '24, that we are requesting would be $400. The parcel ending in '28, we are requesting that that stay at $100. And parcel ending in '26, we are requesting that that parcel stay at the $800 from 2024.
Thank you for that clarification. That's it for my round. Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you. Did you go in front of the referees with this same argument?
We, when we spoke with the referee, we're really focused on that first mistake, which he agreed with us when we met with him. Um, and we did request that we just went back to the 2024 values. We did not get to the point of discussing, you know, what the right token value would be.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions on this item? Any action? If not, it's gonna stay at the recommendations. If none, then we'll proceed to the next property for now. Thank you. I know we have a gentleman in the back corner that had a property he wanted to talk about.
Dan S. Douglas County Clerk, before we get into his time, I just kind of wanted to give some background. So this is, uh, Mark Rasmussen that will come up next. Give me a second here. So Mark's at, uh, 11769 North 175th Circle. That's page 84. So, uh, I talked to Mark on Thursday or Friday last week. And how that started was, so Mark was one of the properties involved last year, unfortunately, in April of 2024 in Bennington that had, uh, severe tornado damage. When he started off the 2024 year, his, uh, property was valued at $778,000. And through the Form 425 process, uh, it went down to 358,000, which the board approved. But Mark's, Mark's position since that time is he's gotten larger claims back from State Farm, basically saying that, uh, the damage basically is almost as much as the original 2024 building value. So he was hoping to get a further reduction in his property this year. He was originally, you know, uh, misled. He was told, hey, you gotta, you need to file a Form 425 again. He was actually on our Form 425 list today. And he was one of the no changes because it's, at this point, it's not the proper avenue because of the damage happened in 2024, not in 2025. But when he, when I was talking to him on, uh, uh, last week, I said, well, you did get this filed before June 30th. So I'll just have a referee review it as a protest real quick. And, uh, the referees ended up not making any changes. They, they felt it should stay at 358, I think it's, yeah, 358,000. hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. But Mark just wanted a, a chance to further explain his position of the, the damage that's happened to his property. So he's, he's saying, if I can just circle back here, yes, this damage happened in 2024, but he's saying as of January one, 2025, which is when the, the twenty-tw, your assessment value is supposed to be as of, there was more damage that had, it had a larger claim that came back that showed there was even more damage to the house than what was originally reported when he filed this Form 425 in July of 2015, or, uh, twenty fifteen, of July of 2024. And then, and as of January one, he basically isn't, he's still to this day, he says, is not able to live in the house. It's basically just studs and the, you know, walls and roof of the house. So he was, I just wanted to give that background on what's happened. He did get a reduction last year, 2024, due to the Form 425 process, and now he's protesting this year because he believes as of January one, 2025, the damage was even more severe than what was originally approved in 2024. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you.
Was the referee aware of it, do you know?
Uh, yeah, I mean, he didn't, he didn't get, because of when it was brought to my attention, he did not meet with the referee. And Rick Coder was actually not the coordinator who reviewed it, it was our other coordinator, Tom Teft. But I mean, whatever he submitted for the Form 425, I passed along to the referee, and I kind of gave them, in my email to them, the same background that I just gave you all.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Mark Rasmussen. Thank you for having me today. We haven't lived in our house since April of last year. We're still living in a villa, and yes, I would like our taxes reduced down to land value only. We haven't lived in it. We haven't been able to enjoy any of it. We don't even know when we're going to live in it yet. If you, I don't know how many of you have State Farm, whatever insurance company have, it's been a battle the whole way. That's all it's been. From July fifteenth to December, we didn't do anything because they, everything went up. I've got adjusters' worksheets when whoever came and looked at the house, all you probably did is did a drive-by, snapped a picture, you never walked inside. Walking inside, there's nothing in there, studs, you know, when everything gets delayed and insurance doesn't want to pay for nothing, that's where we're at. I mean, we just finally got insulation in our house last week. We're still waiting on drywall. Inspector has to inspect it. You know, the insulation yet, that hasn't even been done yet. He did, he failed some of it because they missed a couple items. Got it fixed, he's got to come back, snap pictures, and whatever. So, yeah, I'm asking for a reduction down to land value only because we haven't been able to enjoy it. You know, paying for something that you don't get to use, I, I don't think it's fair. And you ask me whatever question you want, I don't care.
Thank you, sir. I'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Rasmussen, could you, do you remember off the top of your head, what did, what did State Farm have as a replacement value on your home before the tornado?
We were at six hundred and sixty-one thousand, plus twenty percent.
Okay, they had it insured at six sixty-one.
Right.
With a modified guaranteed replacement of twenty percent on it.
Correct.
So, um, when, so, so when the, when the home was hit, did, did, was it, was it deemed, did they have a cat team in there? Did they go, okay, it's destroyed?
No, they actually thought.
So you didn't get, you, you didn't get a check for six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars?
No, sir. They actually thought, we actually thought we were going to get a move in a lot sooner. They actually had it valued at two thirty-nine, they're going to have it fixed. That wasn't the case. I have adjusters' worksheets.
Wait a minute, sorry, Mr. Rasmussen, who, valued at two thirty-nine?
To fix it.
Oh, okay.
To fix the property at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That was May thirtieth.
So the adjusters and the under, the, the, excuse me, the adjusters came in, worked with your contractors or whatever, and they put a number of two thirty-nine on it, or two thirty-six on it, and said, this is how much it's going to cost. When they got done, it wasn't complete, you still haven't been able to move in.
They did not, the adjuster did not work with a contractor. He came in, spent three days there, did an evaluation of it, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sent us the form May thirtieth, here's your work adjuster sheet. My home pride was my contractor, did all the roofing, soffits, windows, everything. He sent that in, they were like, whoa, wait a minute, we're not replacing all the windows. That was in July. They, we approved the roof, they replaced the roof, then they said, we're not going to do anything else until we have a engineer come look at it now. Now we want an engineer, which I wanted one in May.
State Farm said.
Correct. By now, I'm on my second adjuster, and so in, so in August of, of 2024, an engineer came out to look at the, to look at all the windows and some framing. Also, they didn't want to replace all the electrical. When the electrical gave his app, his estimate, they were like, well, we're not replacing all that, and he goes, well, you have to. They wanted an electrical engineer, so they hired a company called Strike Check. They came out. Well, so now, from July fifteenth to December, we couldn't do anything. They put a stop on the house because you, by the time you wait for the report from the guy, there's thirty days, a report from State Farm, no, the thirty days.
Is there any estimated time of completion?
No, not yet.
Mark, the re, I, I don't find this enjoyable. I, I am a, I'm a licensed property and casualty, and I do all kinds of stuff. I'm not going to tell you who I'm with, I'm not going to tell you, I, I can only tell you, this is why I'm asking these questions, is because it's my wheelhouse. I know that I would, just went through with forty-nine customers last year, the same thing that you're going through. My final question is, do you, did you, was your home insured, you're positive about this, it was insured at replacement cost?
Yes.
Okay. And you're not living in it?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
So, so the lot value, I think, is a hundred and eighteen thousand, I think, on the land value?
Yes, sir.
Of the home? And are you asking that there not be any value on the house because it's just, right now, as I understand it, Mr. Ish said, just studs and a foundation there, pretty much?
Yes. I mean, we got siding and a roof. You can't live in it. It's not livable. The electrical is only on the rough end. You have water, but there's no, there's no toilets, no sinks, no tubs, no nothing. I mean, it's like camping, if you want to go camp, I guess.
So what, what's your request? Do you have the?
I would pay the land value, I don't have a problem with that. But right now, I'm not, I'm not living in something, you're asking me to pay for something I don't get a chance to live in.
Okay. And the referees did, I'm not sure.
I can pull up what they, what they said.
I tend to lean toward what you're saying, there might be a value in the foundation of who knows what. Go ahead, Mr. Coder.
I need to pull it up here, and I'll, uh.
Well, I'm just looking at some of the notes in here, where the referee came by November first, and said something about their rehab in the house. Things changed since November first. They didn't even approve all this other, some of this stuff. We couldn't do no siding, we couldn't do nothing. So I don't know what he took pictures out.
Okay.
I have no idea.
So the, uh, the referee, and then, so this is the referee, then there's a referee coordinator. The referee says, recommend protests be dismissed. Provided photographs, as well as assessor's photograph dated November first, 2024, show that property was undergoing rehab as of November first, 2024. Assessor has placed a partial value on the home of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as of January one, 2025. Owner did not provide data to dispute the calculation of this partial value, recommend no change in assessed value. And then the coordinator just said, reviewed the owner's protest packet and the referee's recommended value. I agree with the referee's analysis and value. Part of what Mark submitted, and it wasn't a full report, but it was dated, uh, January third of 2025, and it was basically kind of like a summary of the claim from State Farm, and it had it at six, um, well, I'm sorry, just had it up here, six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents. So I don't mean to, well, I guess I am, I don't mean to do this, but my understanding last year, that there are other factors, but I think, and obviously Mike and his team can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if like, if, if someone submitted something that said, I had three hundred thousand dollars worth of damage, the assessor's office was basically, what their recommendation was basically whatever the value was at the beginning of the year, minus three hundred thousand dollars, in many cases, maybe not all of them. So he would, he would have had a property value of, uh, to start off 2024, of a, a building value of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. So, you know, I think, and I'm not an assessor, but I, if I was talking to Mark, I'd go, well, I don't think you're, there, anyone's going to give you zero dollars on the property if there's a structure there, but they might knock it down to thirty-five thousand or forty thousand if they just do the math of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand minus six hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Right.
So that's kind of what I was, when we were talking on the phone, that's what I told him, I thought maybe would be a reasonable request on his part, but obviously, I, maybe I've taken a lot of liberties because I'm not, you know, the assessor's office or the referee's that reviewed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this property?
I think Mr. Coder was going to say something.
Okay, sure.
Rick Coder, fifty-six twenty-one North One Forty-First Circle. I said, I did not review this firsthand. This case, he's got all kinds of numbers flying around, the insurance paid this, didn't pay that, somebody added this. This gentleman needs to go upside down with the assessor's office staff and figure something out. What he is asking for is just simply beyond the scope of what the BOE is set up for. You know, not our pay grade, I guess, is this term they use.
Okay. And.
I'm not sure if there's time that the assessor, I think you have, do you have a few days, Mr. Goodwilly, where the assessor can make a change?
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. The, the time for us to unilaterally change a value expires on the nineteenth of March.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth of March, right. The next avenue is protest to the BOE. The next avenue is, is an appeal to the Tax Equalization and Review Commission. And I hate to put this gentleman through some, any more hoops than, than we have to. What I would say is, I think the reason we have the value on it we had is, we do have some pictures, and it confirms, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm terrible with names, Mr.?
Rasmussen.
Mr. Rasmussen, I'm sorry. It does confirm, there's studying inside, there's some rough and electrical that we can see. It doesn't, it's obviously not ready for, it's not ready for habitation, for sure. If this were new construction, and we looked at it and saw how far the inside was done, we'd assign it a, a partial value. And so my suggestion would be, if, if you want to leave the status quo, if Mr. Rasmussen wants to file a protest with Turk, he can come visit us, and we can figure out what that ought to look like. But that would force him to do a little bit more red tape, and I can see why he's reluctant to do that at this juncture.
Thank you. Could I use my?
Sure, go ahead.
My thought is, and I've never met you or talked to you, to my knowledge, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. But you're paying something to live somewhere else, I'm sure, for the last year.
Year and a few months.
Yes. So my thought is, we got a lot value of a hundred and eighteen thousand. My thought is, we put the value of the foundation, the studs, some of the rough end, at fifty-two thousand dollars, making it a one hundred and seventy thousand total value. We know the situation, and I'm appreciative of Dan Ish, so I'd make that as a motion. So he doesn't have to go through filing with Turk, which I would want to say, Turk takes, unfortunately, two years or more to go through that process, and I've heard people tell me even three years. So that's where I am.
Second. Can you repeat the figure, the amount? Commissioner Morgan? What was the amount you suggested?
I suggested the lot value at the hundred and eighteen thousand, and then the fifty-two thousand for the structure that is partially there.
Fifty-two thousand.
So a total of one seventy years of value.
Okay. There's been a motion and second by Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you have a comment on that motion?
Sure. So my understanding, Mr. Rasmussen, is you got hit by a tornado?
Yes, sir.
And I went through a lot of these properties. Was it a new home when you got hit?
No, we bought it used in oh-four. Well, we bought it in twenty eighteen, but it was in oh-four.
A lot of them were like taken down to the foundation. Was yours one of those?
No, but the back half got ripped off.
Okay. And so that was how long ago?
April twenty-six, 2024.
Okay. So you've been out of your home rebuilding since then, kind of, right?
Yeah.
Okay. To get back to a hundred percent, what percentage would you say you are at now?
What percentage? I'm going to say I'm at zero, because it's disappointing that your insurance treats you the way you are when you.
No, 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 I'm, believe me, I'm with you there. I'm just saying, you know, construction projects are zero percent complete, fifty percent complete, seventy-five percent complete. Where are you with this construction project?
If you're asking me based on a value so that you can put a dollar amount it on?
No, I'm asking you based on the construction.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Probably seventy-five percent, maybe eighty.
Right, right, right.
But we don't know, I mean, everything's got to be inspected, everything.
Sure. No, I totally get it, I totally get it. I'm just trying to get to, how do we get to fifty-two thousand? It seems to me, and Mr. Clerk, maybe you can clarify this, that he would have been eligible for this damaged property option that a lot of the other tornado victims got. Is that right?
Dan Ish County Clerk, well, he was, he did get it in 2024. There was a reduction in 2024, but he couldn't use that avenue again because there was no new damage in 2025. So that really, to me, the, the better question is, as of January first, how, how far along do you think your construction was along? Because that's what, that's, he got this claim from State Farms on January third of 2025, saying his damage was a little over six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to his home.
Okay.
But, so at that point in time, you might be seventy-five, eight percent along now, but if, I don't know how far along, you know, to me, it sounded like he weren't very, when we were talking anyway, didn't sound like you were very far along as of January one.
Right. And, you know, we're just trying to be fair here, so to get you to something that's, you know, maybe closer to reality than what, what we're at right now, that's the number. The number would be, what do we give for the partially complete building? And if I understand, Commissioner Morgan's recommending fifty-two thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. The, the building complete is going to be something much more than that.
Correct.
Right.
Once it's finished.
So, you know, how do we get to fifty-two thousand? I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to clarify this in my mind.
It's just an estimate, basically, of what it'd be valued at if somebody, you know, you still have plenty of work left to finish, and you don't even know how much work.
Correct.
Totally yet. You don't have the plumbing or anything, or drywall. So I'm trying to take, maybe it's twenty-some percent, or thereabouts.
So that would get the whole thing to a hundred and seventy thousand, is that right? Am I doing my math correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this is an imperfect process, but we're trying to be as fair as we can. You got a, a partially completed tornado damaged house that you can't live in, and hopefully by this time next year, that's going to be taken care of.
Yeah.
In the meantime, you've got a valuation here that says, well, your house is completed, and we know that's not the case. So to kind of do some equitable result here, the hundred and sixty.
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy thousand would be kind of that. And I, I guess, you know, it's reasonable, it's in the ballpark. in the ballpark.
All right, that's time. Commissioner Morgan, do you have something?
Well, let me, let me clarify what sounded like a misimpression from out in the gallery, and maybe Commissioner Kavanaugh, you didn't mean it that way. But the value on Mr. Rasmussen's property is the 358,000 that we set it at last year post-damage process. It didn't, it didn't spring back up to full value. And, and what you just said made it almost sound like that was the case, and that's not right.
No, no, no.
So what we've got on it is the same partial value we had on it post-damage last year.
Right. But I'm looking at this and it says recommended building value 239,900.
Yeah, it's like 40% complete is what we've got on it.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodwillly got his clarification in. I need to go down the queue here. I think Commissioner Friend had a light.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the, the reason that, uh, and Mr. Coder alluded to this, and I, I apologize, I was probably the instigator. The reason there are a lot of numbers flying around is because those numbers are relevant. They're extremely relevant. A, a, a replacement cost on a home is extremely relevant to the market value of the home. If, 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 if an insurance company sets the, the replacement cost and the house gets destroyed and the person can't live in it, destroyed to the point the person can't live in it, that's not going to affect market value? It actually is. It's very important to understand what State Farm has already done, what the, what the insurance company has already done, and what type of situation he's in right now. If he walked away, if he was infinitely wealthy and he walked away from this property, who's going to buy it at $358,000? Not a single person in Douglas County, and I doubt anybody around the country would do that. So the market value is directly related to some of those stupid numbers we were throwing around in regard to what State Farm's actually said to this point. I can tell you, I've, I've lived it. If he, if he were infinitely wealthy, he walked away right now, he would not get $358,000 for this property. As far as I'm concerned, it was incorrect, or, uh, yeah, 358,000. Far as I'm concerned, last year's was incorrect. This was hit by a tornado. It's incorrect. It's uninhabitable, which means that if there's a replacement cost placed on that home, then State Farm is responsible to, any insurance company is responsible to replace that and then get it to the point where he's got the market value again. He does not have the market value. I believe, I don't know that the 52,000 is the right number, but I can tell you, uh, that if he asked for 118, or anybody were to walk up after their home got blasted by a tornado, I would say 118 sounds pretty good to me. You can't even live in the thing. Once, once the insurance company establishes that this money's going to transfer hands, all the building is done, you've got a market value that you can actually wrap your hands around. Right now, there is no market value. Hardly any. I would, I made a second. I believe that 170 is fair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion? If not, the motion again is to leave the land value at 118,100? And then, okay, one second, sir. And then take the building value to 52,000. Right? Okay.
May I get the property value tax back that I had to pay last year?
And that's not what we're considering at the moment, sir.
Okay.
That's the motion to amend the protest as such for this property. So we'll vote on that.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers is absent. Commissioner Borgeson voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Sir, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Legally, we couldn't change last year.
I think they didn't do it right last year.
Yeah. I just want you to know this board cannot do that.
I, I, I get it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody?
Thank you.
Yes. Um, anybody else, other properties, sir?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Chad Adams. Is my address is 312 South 16th Street. I have 30 parcel protests I'd like to talk to you today about equalization and more so the lack of equalization on part of the Douglas County Assessor's Office and the Board of Equalization Referees. Nebraska state law revised statute 77112 requires property to be valued at market value for tax purposes. With case law that goes on to state, the best indicator of market value is what something sells for. So why does Douglas County Assessor's Office fight that indicator so much and the Board of Equalization Referees dismiss that information only when it comes to commercial real estate valuation? Both of these actions shift tax burden to the residential property owners. The examples of this all are on the protest forums and up for vote before you today. I'd love to talk about all 30 of them, but I'll just bring a couple forward. A West Omaha commercial land is valued at $15,000 per acre. You cross the street to the residential side, valuations are $246,000 per acre. You go to the other direction, the residential side, they're $90,000 an acre. Dismissed. A commercial property bought for $750,000 in 2023 and then sold again for $1.1 million in 2024. On their very own real estate transfer statement, it has the market value on it by the owners at $1.1 million, yet the assessor's office says, nope, wait, the market value is only $150,000 for tax purposes. And the Board of Equalization Referees say, we agree, based on what information? A commercial apartment that sold for double its tax valuation in 2020 and the valuation didn't change for four years. I would challenge anyone to show me a piece of residential property valuation that is below its 2020 sales price. Or a commercial site that sold in 2022 for 4.75 million, yet the assessor's office currently valuation is only at 1.46, or 1.6 million. Residential properties are valued disproportionately and the evidence to support that is provided directly by the assessor's office. Here's a copy of the commercial sales report provided by the assessor's office. The highlighted lines are all out of compliance with state law. The valued at 85, they are valued at 85% or less of a recent sales price. That's 66% of the recent sales of that one particular category. Uh, that is not property valued. Um, and this, and this is just the properties that are sold. How many unsold properties aren't valued correctly? Let's compare this to Ms. Rockwell's property. I don't know her other than the fact that she filed a protest with you guys on her tax valuation this year. Here's the supporting documentation from this, from the assessor's office provided. See the difference? Only 5% are out of compliance. The other fact is that the valuations of the residential side are already 118% of the sales price. Going back to the commercials, commercial valuations, they're only at 48% of the sales price. Did I just happen to find the one example? Unfortunately, no. Under a different commercial protest that you have in front of you and denied by your referees, this one is 33% out of compliance with state law and 71% valuation on sales prices up to four years ago. Yet, here's a protest, again, Mr. Broker, I don't know him from anything, another protester on the residential side, 0% are out of compliance, and in fact, all supporting residential sales are already 19% above their average sale price. The worst part, this doesn't even address other commercial properties that haven't sold. I'm just asking where the equalization from this board on their part of the broken property tax system is. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Sir, could you leave that information or copy of it with the clerk so we could look at it?
Sure. What, you need, anything in particular that you want? I mean, I've got, anything in particular that you want? I've got all the addresses.
The ones that you held up particularly, but, but all of it, if you could. Um, I, this is very interesting disparity that you point out, and I just want to take a closer look at it.
Sure. Well, I mean, I appreciate you guys have had the whole conversation of market value, like, all day. And market value is what something buys and sells for, right?
Right.
And, and, you know, I find it very interesting on, even on some of the real estate tax transfer statements, it asks, what's the market value of this property, right? And it, you know, it happened within the last year or two and-
Sure.
The assessor's office and your own referees are like, that's not information we're taking into account. So-
I think we can all agree it's not a perfect-
100%, 100%.
And, and so, you know, when we get information like this, my impression is, okay, well, I'm going to take it and talk to some of the folks who do this and see if there are adjustments we can make to make it better. But I want to thank you, as a private citizen, for coming forward and helping us with this. It's appreciated.
I'm not a professional or anything. I just, a lot of things that we, we've noticed and I, I do my little small part or whatever, but I, I would, I guess hate to see what, what happened if somebody would really pull back the, the covers on some of this stuff. Because interesting enough, I, I don't know how it happened, but one of the commercial properties were actually allowed to give some information after the close of the, uh, referee period in, in, in late July. And, and they stated that law requires different categories to be equalized.
Right.
You know, and their argument of why they're using other commercial values that are super low, not current sales, but as you guys were talking about in the Benson neighborhood, they're using the low valuation of another property that's probably incorrect to justify why they're, even though they bought it for $5 million, why they should only be valued at 1.6 because that's what my neighbors are valued at. So it's like, there's a lot of, I don't know.
It's great observation. I just want to tell you, you remind me of, on the Capitol Building in Lincoln, um, one of the things that's inscribed there is salvation of the state, um, is based on the watchfulness of its citizens.
Sure.
And you're a perfect example of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Sir, I'm sorry. I had to step out.
I was talking on everybody's time, so.
No, I just, I didn't catch your name and-
Uh, Chad Adams.
Adams. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go Commissioner Morgan.
Chad, you can leave that information?
I can. It's, I mean, it's got my scribbled all over it, but I-
And if you take it to our office, they'll make copies of it.
I, I can send a copy to Dan and he can forward it on.
And I'll just say, the assessor has a very, very difficult job, these people.
100%, yeah.
But I can tell you this, that if somebody buys a home for 600,000 or a commercial property for 600,000, hey, that's what it should be valued at, period, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
And if anyone were to come here and tell us, say, I bought it for a million dollars 12 months ago or six months ago, whatever, we're not going to change it. I'm not, anyway. The other commissioners can do as they wish.
But to me, my-
But we're not, we're going to put it at what they paid for it, pretty close to it. And that's, in my opinion, and I stand to be corrected by Mr. Goodwillie or Ron Marta or anyone in his office, I think that's what they try to do to the best of their ability and their peoples. So.
Yeah, no, I was just going to quickly say to Ms. Borgeson's comment earlier, though, how she votes no on everything because you kind of delegate that to your referees. Even your referees are disregarding the information you just said, where I pointed out something sold 2022, 2023, 2024 for a price and your 30% tax valuation of a sales price, and your referees go.
With respect to the referees, I still feel we have that responsibility. And I've talked to the assessor, Walt Pepper, about this some time ago in the last two years, and unfortunately it's not with us now.
Sure.
About the county doing it the way we used to do it when Jim Kavanaugh's father was on and I was on for one term in the 70s, not seeking reelection to it. We would sit there three days a week and go through every one of them with the assessor beside us. And I loved that system. And I think that was a great system that we did. And that's why I won't vote no or yes-
Sure.
-for whatever citizen comes down. I use comparables and try to understand what they're requesting.
Right.
But thanks for leaving those and our, uh, people over there will make copies so that we have some of that information.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson.
I just wanted to comment that, um, it, it is a broken system.
Yeah.
And I've said that. And I've actually said it was even before, most recent, us as a board sitting as the Board of Equalization for many, many, many years. And, um, I would love to hear at some point, maybe we can have coffee on what you think our solutions could be because we are constantly trying to go to the legislature to change this because it is. It's a broken system.
Right.
It's not the fault of the assessor. It's not the fault of the referees. It's not the fault of this board. It's the fault of what we have before us and how we're supposed to do it. And again, my biggest beef on all of this is that Board of Equalization, we give every citizen the right to come before Board of Equalization, or the protest, file protest. Um, they get the notice of it. They know when the time is. They can go online. Same is not done when it gets to this board.
Sure.
And we are doing, in my opinion, it is unfair, as you pointed out, unfair to many who have not had the opportunity to come before us.
Sure.
So, yeah, if we want to go back to the way we did it, you know, we'll sit here. I, I can remember 12-hour days, eight to eight, and then, and people were hot because we didn't get them in on their, you know, 15-minute time. But it was a good system because we actually were in front of the taxpayers and we heard what they had to say. We had the assessor sitting next to us, the appraiser, whoever, and, and it worked. But it didn't work because there were so many, we couldn't get it done in the timeline. So at some point, I would love to pick your brain, um, you know, again, over a cup of coffee or whatever, to find solutions to this broken system that we constantly try to fix on the back end rather than on the front end.
Sure.
So again, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that had other properties to discuss?
Hi, my name is David Cole and, uh, I own the Coles pharmacies. And I'm here to protest. I'm a pharmacist and I'm here to protest, uh, the valuation of my property at 12701 Q Street. The, uh, value, and I'm, I'm glad I have the opportunity to do this about the neg, you know, to avoid the negative impact to my business. So I will take advantage of that. It was, it was approximately a little less than a 50% increase, almost a million dollars. And, uh, when I look, my property is, uh, valued at $120 per square foot, which includes a warehouse hitting, hidden in the back of the property. And, uh, my neighbor, and I'm sucking down into the, off of Q Street, I'm sucking down off the property. And when I, my neighbor who's catty corner, you know, property that's fully filled up, they're $80 a square foot. And then, um, the property to the west that's fully filled and it's right on Q Street, that's not sucking down, it's $110 a square foot. And then when we compare it even to something that's right on Dodge Street, a fully filled up 114th and Dodge on the west side, the entire shopping center is $108 a square foot. So to me, it seemed like it was pretty simple math. So I was thinking that a fair value for me would be something like $90 a square foot, which would still, for my increase from approximately 2.2 million to approximately 3.2 million, would be 2.2 million 556,000, which I thought would be a, a fair amount. But, um, I didn't have any, uh, decrease. And so I need to do what I can to not negatively impact my corporation, and that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, this is on page 53. It's, uh-
I do have the pictures.
2K LLC on page 53.
Mr. Clerk, can you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, it's, uh, page 53, uh, like Roman numeral two, then K, LLC.
Sure.
It's 12701 Q Street.
Yeah, it's the $80 a square foot property. That's catty corner right on the property. Yeah, that's the $80 a square foot property, that's catty-corner right on the property. That's the $80, there's the 110, and there's the-
Are these all single copies?
Yeah, but you can have this for-
Okay, I'll wait till-
In a sec, yeah.
Yeah. That's all I have, though. There you go. That's the $80 square foot property, that's catty-corner right on Q Street, not sunken down. Next one. This is the one that's right on Q Street to the west of me, it's fully occupied, it's right on Q, no warehouse or anything involved with it. And then, this is the Miracle Hills Plaza on the west side, Dodge Street, prime property, at $108 a square foot, all filled up.
I don't mean to correct you, Mr. Cole, but that's the east side of the street.
That's the east side, yes.
That's where the old Clancy's, because the west side is totally vacant.
Right.
They just rehabbed that in the last two, three years, and it's pretty vacant. And that one's 108. And yours is what, again, what?
Mine's at 120, and it includes a 6,000-square-foot warehouse, that's hidden in the back.
Okay. Before I go down the queue, let's get the full context from the referee. And, Mr. Clark, did you have something?
Uh, no, but I'll-
Okay, just helping with the images.
Sorry.
What's the number you're requesting, exactly?
$90, 2,556,000. 2,556,000.
What do we have, Dan, right now, 3 million?
So, I can let Chris speak to it, Musto. But these are the referee comments I have pulled up.
Yes, Chris Musto, Commercial Coordinator. Let's get back to the referee. Okay, I can give you the referee comments on this one. We're met with property owner and owner's rep, DC Commissioner PJ Morgan. At time of scheduled hearing, evidence for equalization with larger shopping centers was provided, but comparison is nonvalid as buildings provide, provided for comparison purposes are non-similar to the protested property. Property owner is owner-occupied and no rental information is available to dispute assessor's income model or valuation model. A review of assessor's income valuation model concludes that reasonable rent, vacancy expenses, and capitalization rates are inputs were utilized. Overall, insufficient evidence is concluded to have been provided to support the request change in value. So, they dismissed it on that basis.
All right. Thank you. Let's get into some conversation here. Commissioner Morgan?
Okay, I was gonna, I had asked if I could say something before, but I wanted to wait my turn, to be sure that Mr. Cole called me and asked me if I'd help him. That's why I went with him, just so the record's clear, and David, please correct anything I say. The fact is, now we're hearing that the rental income, we don't know what the rental income is, and if you go back to the first case, rental income, we're talking about the market value and equalization earlier on Benson property. I don't know what he pays rent, and I've never asked him what he pays rent to himself. But when you've got a building right across the street from his on Q that sits above his, he sits down below it, and it's at $80 a foot?
Yes.
That strip center, and I don't know who owns it. And you're at $120 or whatever you're requesting a square foot, or, I mean, your value's 120, or you take the center right by Miracle Hills on the east side that's fully occupied, and that one's at, how much, David?
108.
108. And again, he's at more money in a poorer location, in my opinion, 123rd and Q. And I did go out there to look at both the property across the street and his property, and I know the one on 114th where Clancy's was, and now it's DJ's or whatever, and some other buildings. It just seems like there's an inconsistency, because we talked about equalization in other properties and what they'd be worth. And I really feel that his property should be somewhere, when you said $90 a foot for yours, the one across the street, the picture of it seems to be a good center with parking right in front off Q. And I stand to be corrected by the referee about that.
Well, I just want to be clear that we're talking two different things here. The assessor's information is provided, including their estimate for what rent would be if it were available for rent, which would be market, not, not something less than or more than market. And so, their valuation goes through based upon that, which they're generating, what they've estimated a market value, and we could look at what they have selected from the market to generate rents, expenses, vacancy, and collections, overall capitalization rates. Now, on the basis of the submitted information is on an equalization, which is not based upon sales, which the assessor has provided in their packet, sales, and they've gone through and looked at properties that had some like and similarities to create and support where their value came in on the income side. I don't disagree with you that on an equalization argument, you may be able to look at this and find a different number.
But equalization, you don't know what the people across the street are paying on rent, and we don't know what they're paying on rent on 114th and Dodge on the east side.
No, equalization is based upon the assessed value of the property, and that would be, it wouldn't matter what, you know, owner-occupied properties don't pay rent. I mean, they've, you know, they can pay rent to themselves, that would be something they work out between them and their accountant and the IRS, I would assume. But the equalization is based on the assessment, but you would be looking for properties that have similar, we keep talking about this one has a retail component as well as an industrial warehouse component. So, you would look at properties that have the same components, which, quite granted, may be difficult to find.
But the component on 114th is exactly the same kind of component as what he has in his center, and the one on 80, across the street that's $80 is retail.
Well, he said it's retail and warehouse.
No warehouse across the street.
Right. And if we were looking at two properties the same, we would look at something that had a portion that was in retail and a portion that was warehouse to be like properties. This is a complex property, there's no doubt about it.
All right, that's time. We have to go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And I understand your argument here relative to the information that was not provided by Mr. Cole. And I guess, PJ, do you represent Mr. Cole at the-
I just volunteered. I won't accept.
But I mean, you were with him at the referee's hearing?
Yes.
Okay. You know, it makes it a little difficult if the referee doesn't have the information. The duty is upon, in my opinion, the property owner to provide the information, because we're asking the referee to overturn a previously established value by the assessor's office. We rely on the assessor's office to do a good job. We rely on the referees, in a sense, to check their homework, and in this opinion, it seems like both of those things are done. It's not their job to go out and get the information that's indicated was not provided here. And I understand the back and forth on these arguments regarding rentals and stuff, but is it my impression that what you say in here was not provided to the referee? Is that correct?
No, I believe the comparables that the property owner provided, several, what would they be, assessor sheets or sheets that were printed off that were providing as equalization comparables?
But, I mean, those are not the rental comparables that we're hearing about.
Well, nobody's gotten to talk about, I mean, you're going through another approach. Again, we've got the valuation on the cost, the sales and the income, and that's all those pieces, and that's valuation. On equalization, we're just looking at what our neighbor is assessed at, regardless of what their value of their property may or may not be, and saying, I should be equalized with them.
And that happened here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, if that's gonna be our standard, I think we have to use our standard, and if we're gonna depart from that, I guess we depart from it with everybody. I mean, it's a little difficult to do this the way that we're doing it, because we don't give the attention to each and every property that maybe we should. What Commissioner Morgan was mentioning about, we used to do it where the commissioners, our job was to sit with the owner and help in the determination of that. That's not happening anymore. And occasionally, a commissioner will step in and sit with the owner, but that's a very, very rare thing. And barring going back to that, I'm a little loath to say, okay, we're gonna change stuff, maybe it would be perceived because a commissioner was there. And I, you know, I'm sensitive to that, but I don't want to have that be, you know, a here-and-there precedent. We either do them all with commissioners, or maybe do none of them with commissioners. And I'm in favor of doing them all, but that would take us to a different level of time, and I'm more than willing to commit to the time to do it all. We have 4,000 and some here, we could divide them up among commissioners, sitting with referees, but unless we do that, I'm not comfortable with the referee, you know, being faced with an occasional commissioner coming in. It's just, I think if we sit with the landowner at the referee process, and then we sit here judging that referee's decision, I'm uneasy with that process. I don't want it to be perceived as kind of a conflict, and it could be. So, I guess I'd stick with the referee on this one.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, can you tell me again, last year, the assessed building value and the land value together was what amount? Can you tell me that again?
2,250,000, approximately. 2,250,000, approximately.
2 million what?
For 2,300-
It should be on that sheet.
We don't have, I think Dan may be looking up the prior year.
Went from about 2.3 to 3.2.
And I guess this might be overly simplistic, but is there any indication about what the business and the approach that's being taken there didn't change much? Is there any indication, based on the findings that we have and the increase that occurred, what changed over that year? I mean, if we're talking over a million dollars, look, and here's the thing, I don't disagree with what people have been saying, that it's really, really difficult for us to get our hands wrapped around this. But again, if you oversimplify it, what changed in one year from an assessment standpoint to justify an increase of that amount?
Well, Commissioner, I just, I'm not going to read into the assessor information, but we would have to look back and see, when was the last time the assessor appraised this? I mean, I've got, I've seen some times when a property hasn't changed for 10 years, or five years, or three years. So, I'm not gonna tell you that the whole change from 2 million X to 3 million X happened in one year. I have to defer to reviewing the assessor information in that case.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. I did have Commissioner Morgan in the queue. You're up. Commissioner Morgan, you're up, in case you still want your turn. If not, any other comments or questions on this matter?
Well, the other building I was comparing it to is also owner-occupied, and that I was comparing it to. And then, the fact that it was a warehouse, well, it's harder to find a comparable property, but the warehouse does, since most of the properties are retail, a warehouse decreases the value of the property, so.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, so, Dan, you correct me. I think, isn't it, what I was trying to see is if it was a $900,000 increase.
About 930,000.
930,000 in one year, from 2,300,000 to 3,200,000, approximately. And when you compare it per square foot, and if you drive there, you'll see a strip center that looks to be newer, right across the street. And we all have seen where Jack and Mary's, the Clancy's was and all that, fully occupied, at a lesser amount per square foot. And we talked about not taking income into too much consideration. I don't know what he's paying rent, and I really do not, and I never asked you what you pay yourself rent. I was just doing it as a market value of those buildings. I don't know what they pay rent, but I assume 114th would be a higher rent than 123rd and Q. To me, there should be some compromise on this property of a half a million dollar increase from the year before. He hasn't made any new improvements on the property and raised it to 2,700,000 or whatever, 2,800, and not have a nearly million dollar increase in his property taxes. That was my feeling. And I'd like to see if there might be support to do it. I'd make a motion that it be increased to 2,750,000, which is a compromise and a half a million dollar increase.
Motion is to have the total assessment be 2,750,000? Is that correct? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
So, that means, where are we at? The building would stay at what it is, or the land value would stay at what it is, and then you'd reduce it by the difference of the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Just second, all right. My friend, Mr. Goodwilly, did you have a clarification?
Well, I just, excuse me, I just, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office, I just wanted to provide some valuation history, since Mr. Musto raised it. The property was at 2.21 million, beginning in 2015, to 2.37 in 2021, and then to 3.28 in 2025. So, Mr. Musto's characterization is probably right, that this is a reappraisal that had been coming for some time.
All right. There's a motion on table. That was just stated a few seconds ago, so. Other comments on that motion? If not, we'll vote on the motion.
Motion fails. Commissioners, Friend and Morgan voting yes. Commissioner Garcia abstaining, all other commissioners voting no.
Okay. That is-
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think we have a property over here.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. You should have a little sheet with some yellow highlights on it. I thought that was quicker than me doing a lot of talking. All I got here, in 2022, the tax value of our house was increased by 90, 190%.
I'm sorry, sir, could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. John Wilhelmie, 13611 Coming Street, Ohio.
And, sorry.
I'm retired.
Sorry, John, just real quick, Commissioners, this- Sorry, John, just real quick, Commissioners, this can be found on page 63. It's pretty close to the top, 13611 Cumming Street.
It's actually highlighted on the last page of your handout.
Yeah, page 63.
Well, yeah, he, well, he actually, the attachment he handed out, you could see it in there. But if you're going off the big list of recommendations we submitted, it's on page 63.
Since the increase in 2022, the next year, because I missed the protest date. I say "we" in my writing, and my wife sees that, I'll be in trouble. I missed the date. We've been through Turk, number of conversations. So this year, I should point out, the county, an appraisal, after the big increase, the next year, they reduced it back down to 1,300,000 without my protest. Did that on their own. So somebody thought it was wrong.
How much would that have been?
Pardon me?
How much would that have been, reduction, from one year to the next? How many thousands?
They reduced the value by 600,000.
Automatically?
They just did that, it just appeared. I had nothing to do with it. Wish I had of, but I didn't. The 190%, I mean, I think that's an error. That is crazy. I have no written documentation, but I've told there were three of us that had that happen. I have no proof of that. I have a spreadsheet on the back of the comparables, and the average increase was 8.7%, while ours went up 80 to 90%. I've been through Turk, and the notice I got from my representative at the Turk is the county did not want to settle the Turk case. I have no idea, does that mean they disagreed? They just didn't want to settle it? I have no idea what it means. So, but we've been down that road. So this year, I filed a protest. I thought I had a novel solution. Asked for $100,000 reduction in this year's valuation, and $100,000 for the next five years. That would offset the $600,000 jump that I've paid taxes on over the time. And maybe it's a simple solution, I don't know. I think you say the system's broke. There's a line in the property record, about two-thirds of the way down in my handout, that starts year built, 1.9%. In the middle, that becomes 190% and shows a $750,000 increase. And even in an email, they talk about a factor of 1.9%. That needs to be cleaned up. I think junior high math would say 1.9% doesn't equal 190%. There, I'm told there's no notes, because I think this was done by predecessors of predecessors, explaining the 1.9 to the 190. So I'm here, hat in hand, asking for a little help in reducing and covering the error. I think tax-wise, it's $12,000. To me, that's real money, so.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Before we start in the conversation, can we get the context from the referee?
Rick Coder, Coordinator, Board of Equalization. I'm just reading the notes again. Met with owner, reviewed protest, assessor's notes. Owner's disputeing, claimed that in 2022, the assessment by the Board of Equalization, and he's trying to, basically, he wants to rebate back, felt he overpaid for a couple of years, and wants to somehow use the future valuation of the property to recoup what he overpaid. And that is just really kind of outside the scope of what we can do for him. That makes sense?
Okay. Thank you. We'll start the conversation. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mr. Coder, this is something that runs through all of these, and I don't know if you have it, I know the assessor does. But the average percentage in residential property sales this year, I think, went up 5%, 6%? Do you know that number? There is a number.
Overall sales, you're talking about commissioner prices?
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, I don't have that in front of me, no.
Mr. Goodwillly, I think you might have that number.
Overall, probably about 7% or 8%.
7% or 8%. And, you know, it's been plus or minus in that ballpark since the COVID bounce back. Is that about right?
Well, sure, but the thing to understand about averages, and you know this, is that you'll have some neighborhoods that move faster than others.
Right.
So, and if you go several, or three, or even four years without a reappraisal, those numbers don't go away.
Would there be, this is Linden Estates, which is a very nice neighborhood. Would there be a way to drill down and separate that percentage of?
Well, we might. I don't have that with me at the moment.
No, I understand. But it certainly probably wouldn't be lower than that countywide average.
I'd be shocked if it were.
Okay. So we're dealing with a nice property in a nice neighborhood, and from what I can see from the assessor's determination, 2025 valuation is supported and recommending no change. I guess I'd have a tough time getting around the fact that you're probably sitting on a property that's gone up in value the last four or five years. I say this because I have a much more modest home, but it's in a nice neighborhood, and it's gone up every single year. I mean, every single year for the last five years, I think. We haven't protested, but it's one of those, you live in a nice place, in a nice city, and we're fortunate enough to have appreciating real estate. I think everybody'd agree with that. It's just a matter of how much does it appreciate? And in this case, you make, you know, an interesting point in terms of the appreciation from 2018 to now, which, you know, 2018, 19, 20, and 21 looked like flat. And I would say, before 2020, we were having the same kind of appreciation countywide that we've had since we bounced back from, you know, the COVID downturn. So if you're flat for a number of years, I think what happens is they eventually get around to you, and the valuation goes up. In my case, they get around to me almost every year. That's amazing, and I.
You're a special commissioner.
Thank you very much. If it wasn't for the honor, I'd just as soon let it go by.
I understand.
I don't know if you can appreciate that. I know that it's not comfortable, and this is, as you've noticed, not a perfect process. But I do appreciate the research that you've done on this. It's just that, you know, if you look at it, you had flat valuation for a number of years, and then you had a, you know, an update. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it kind of accumulates. So that if you're flat for a number of years, and they finally get around to evaluating it, particularly if you're flat in a very nice neighborhood, it can jump up a little bit. I understand you would get.
If the market is appreciating, it's like rust. It doesn't really sleep.
I'm sorry?
I said, if the market is appreciating, it's a little like rust. It never really sleeps. And in Mr. Wilhelmie's situation, we changed the model for 2022 for some of the things we did in Linden Estates. And there were several others that were in Mr. Wilhelmie's boat. They protested and got reductions. Mr. Wilhelmie missed the protest deadline, okay? After you miss a protest deadline, you're done, unless there's some kind of a clerical error. And this wasn't a clerical error. We made a judgment about some homes in Linden Estates. Events proved that we were too high, and we did what you would expect us to do if we made a mistake. We took it down. But it was an error in the model. It wasn't a clerical error, which is all you're left with after you miss your protest deadline. So what we did was, we took stock the next year. We noted what the protests did the year before. We looked at the sales in Linden Estates that were available to us, and we took Mr. Wilhelmie's values down, which is what you would expect. But no, you don't get to go back and relitigate three years ago.
Okay, I got to move on. Commissioner Morgan?
And Mr. Goodwillly, you could have stayed down if you wanted to correct what I might say. But the interesting thing, Commissioner Kavanaugh, is he didn't protest. The next year, his property value went down, and is still down approximately half a million dollars from what happened in one year, if I'm stating that correctly. Because I heard you say, you did not protest. All of a sudden, you got basically about a 40%, 35% reduction in your value, 600,000 from what it was. And it's, that's been it? Is that accurate? So he didn't protest?
No, no, he missed 20, the 22 protest deadline is what he missed. That's when the big, that's when the big increase occurred.
But then they did reduce it the next year, so they realized somebody, or the machine, or the model, or whatever, did make a mistake, and it'd be like me going into a store and say, "You tagged that wrong a year ago when I bought this, and I want to bring it back. Can you give me a discount now on the next one I buy?" So he's asking us, if I'm stating it properly, I'm trying to make it simple because I don't have a big brain.
We reduced the value because we decided that our model came out too high. It wasn't because there was a mathematical mistake or a clerical error.
And it stayed down 600,000?
We've left it. I suspect that if it's been a few years, we'll probably look at them going forward.
I think, Commissioner Morgan? Okay. Let me circle back to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And Mr. Wilhelm, I hope you appreciate that. We are impressed by you taking the time and effort to, you know, go into this. It's as much an education for us as anything else, and you make some points. The thing I think that's salient here is that this going down from the 2022 high was a self-correction that, you know, you didn't request, but you got it. And now we're kind of at a plateau again, like we were prior to '22, on this particular property. But it hasn't gone significantly up. As a matter of fact, it hasn't reached that 2022 level. I guess one thing that you brought up, and this is, again, part of the education process, is you got a Turk opinion that was ambiguous? Is that what I heard you say?
We had an attorney who took.
If you could speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. We had an attorney who took the case to Turk.
Yes.
My attorney's response to me was, "The county did not want to settle the case." And I really don't know what that means.
Okay. Mr. Goodwillly, could you enlighten us on this?
Yeah, I think it went to, it went to decision in '23, which left the value at 1.3. So Mr. Wilhelmie must have protested a year subsequent to '22, is that right?
It was after '22, yes.
So you probably protested '23, and they just left it alone.
Okay. So I think Mr. Wilhelm.
No, we were protesting 2022. We were protesting the big number. I would not protest the low number.
No, but they would have, but they wouldn't have had jurisdiction because you filed no protest with the county board.
Yeah, you have to have a protest to appeal.
Well.
If you didn't protest.
My attorney says he took it to Turk, that's all I can say.
Well, I suspect it was tax year '23.
Okay. So it was a sustained verdict, basically? They sustained the county's valuation? Yes? Thank you. Thank you for your time and effort on this, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this matter, on this property? If not, we're going to move to the next property.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that had a property they wanted to discuss today? If not, we're going to circle back to the main motion as amended. There was just the one property that was related to the tornado that we did amend. But otherwise, outside of that, we are approving all the other recommendations with this main motion.
And I did, Dan Ash County Clerk, there are two additional attachments I just want to draw to your attention that I included in the binder that will be included for approval. Attachment B are properties that they have privacy flags, so we can't have them as a part of the public record. And then Attachment C are, since we posted the recommendations yesterday, there were three changes the referees wanted to make. So in all three cases, they were protests that were put down as dismissed, but they intended to change them. And so Attachment C just includes, like, what they're changing them to. So I just wanted to make sure the motion includes those items as well.
Got it. All right. We'll circle back to the vote on item G.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That completes the agenda items for equalization. Can I get a motion for adjournment of equalization? Motion by Morgan, second by Friend.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will now open up the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Fahy? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers is absent, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting and the Board of Commissioners budget meeting held Tuesday, July 29, 2025. B is the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, August 12, 2025. Do I have a motion of second? Motion by Friend, second by Morgan, for A and B.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Please note that Mr. Mark LaFleur has requested that we pull H and table that for later. So that leaves us with items A through G. Do I have a motion of second for A through G? Motion by Friend, second by Morgan. Comments or questions on consent agenda?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have committees, Section 8. Under Finance, we have Budget Report as presented. Under HR, we have Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service, also as presented. Before we get into exec session, please note two items. One is that we will be on recess next week, so we will not have a meeting on August 12. So we will be returning on August 19. Please also note that there is a committee meeting today at 1:30 PM for Community Services. Maybe that's what you wanted to comment on? Okay. So that's at 1:30 PM today in Room 903. We do have a need for executive session today for labor negotiation, contract negotiation, legal advice, and litigation. Do I have a motion of second for exec session? Motion by Friend, second by Morgan. We'll vote. Litigation, legal advice, contract negotiation, and labor negotiation.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purposes of labor negotiation, contract negotiation, legal advice, and litigation.
Right. Motion re-cavied and adjourned by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes six to zero. Meeting is over at 12:17 PM.